Good afternoon, everybody. It's April 11th and this is the revised time meeting, four o'clock for the Public Works and Finance Committee. At the outset, we're going to be moving items four and five, the two public meetings, down to the last couple of items on the agenda. And because they were originally posted as starting at 4:30, so we're going to move them down so that everybody who wants to participate can actually show up. So first out is the approval of minutes from March 28th.
I move we accept the minutes. Or I see them, it's fine. I'm never sure if we move. Yeah. I move that we accept the minutes.
Yep. And they look good to me, too.
I wasn't here.
And I'm sure they were well-written, so.
They are.
Yep. So we'll consider them approved. I guess I should mention, too, that Catherine Bonzo's here. I'm chairing. John Weber is the new Walter Steed for purposes of this meeting, and Gary Redenour, City Supervisor, over here. So next up is the dispersment report for March of 2016. Gary?
You have in your packets the dispersment report, and I'm sorry, I asked Sarah, she was, asked if she should be here, and I said she didn't need to be. If you had any questions you could ask me, I'll answer them as best I can. However, I don't even have the original for you to sign. So we will have that up for you in a few moments. But in the meantime, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
We bought a lot of vehicles, it looks like.
Yes. Typically, we ask staff to hold off on the vehicles that were budgeted, in this case, the FY 2016 budget, till after the first of the year, because we get our tax dispersment around that time, and we get typically our second quarter dispersments from the state. So we like to get those big revenues in before we start drawing down money on vehicles. And those typically are some of our biggest expenditures.
Yeah, they are. And the equipment kind of falls into the same.
Yes.
Category.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Gary, we, we don't necessarily retire a vehicle just because a new one was on the list to be purchased. We do purchase the new vehicle and then maintain. The reason I ask that is I had a person from town ask me over the weekend, "The city of Moscow sure has a lot of very nice red pickups." And I said, "We sure do." And I said, "We keep them as long as we can," and the staff spends a lot of time on the just normal maintenance and cleaning so that they do look as good as they do, but they are not all new vehicles.
No, sir.
I'm not so sure he believed me, but he was given the information that we don't just go out and buy new vehicles because it's Tuesday.
If I may, we have an obsolescence program that we started probably 16 years ago, where we look at our equipment, may have been before that. We look at our equipment and we put it on a usable life, a depreciation schedule. Some of those depreciation schedules, I believe for pickups, it's 12 years, 10 or 12 years. So we expect to get at least 10 or 12 years out of these vehicles. Then it comes up for, okay, we've gotten our time out of this, we need to look and make sure that, that we're able to replace it if we need to. But that isn't, that isn't the ultimate decision. The decision is based upon how many times it's been in the shop, is it still efficient? Some vehicles, as you know, when you bought pickups, or any vehicle, sometimes you get a vehicle that you want to hang on to forever. It runs great, never gives you any trouble, and then you get some vehicles that are lemons. And in the first year, you know, "This is something I'm going to get rid of as quickly as possible," because it's either in the shop, or it's inefficient, or anything like that. So the shop really does a good job, our mechanic staff out there, keeping records on these vehicles. So we have everything from a low-use-vehicle inventory. So we look at all of our vehicles, look at the hours on the equipment, or the mileage on the, on the road vehicles, to determine, should they still be in our inventory, or do we even need to have them? Because the more vehicles you have, the more your insurance costs, the more fuel costs, the more mechanics time, that sort of thing, to maintain them. So it's managed pretty actively. But yes, we have some older, quite a few older pickups, actually. Typically, those are for, they're utilized for part-time folks in the Parks and Street Department during the summertime. They sit idle part of the time of the year when they aren't needed. We try to keep them in as good a shape as possible. But yeah, hopefully, they look nice, and we take good care of them, but no, they aren't all new.
Well, yeah, I hope that gentleman is listening.
But I wanted to say, as newly-elected counselor, when I sat through all the PowerPoint presentations by all the department heads, I was really, had a good time when Les brought the whole spreadsheet of every single itemized piece of equipment, and how it was amortized, you know, for the whole, it was quite detailed. So if they ever want to see that information, where would they go to find that?
They can come in and make a request. We'll provide it to them, or at least let them take a look at it. It is a giant spreadsheet, as you know.
It's huge.
But we'd be happy to show them whatever they want to know. Contact the city clerk, or my office, and we could do that.
I would imagine that probably the only thing that we do replace on a real, regular basis are police cars.
Police cars are on, I believe, a six- or seven-year depreciation schedule at this point. And again, we're looking at that as well. A great example is, we used to have computer, our computer systems used to have a warranty. We used to buy them from Dell, and they had a three-year warranty on them. So we rolled our computers over every three years, so they were never out of warranty. Then we looked at it and said, "Gosh, a lot of these still work pretty well." So we extended that to a four-year program, and now we may even be on something else. So we try to really gauge when you start to have more failures than is acceptable, and then try to set your depreciation and amortization schedule. So it starts to kick in just before that magic number. So we're constantly looking at ways like that to get as much efficiency as possible.
It's great that person asks, and now you know how to help them find how well it's thought about.
Yep. Okay, so we'll sign off on that.
I'll get those up here.
Next up is the second quarter fiscal year 2016 financial report.
Yes, you have that in your packet as well. This is something that needs to be done according to the laws of the state of Idaho. The fourth quarter typically gets put out in the same sequence as the audit. So again, the numbers speak for themselves. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Once it's approved by council, it would be published in the newspaper of record, the Moscow Pullman Daily News.
I don't have any questions.
John? Okay, so let's consider that report approved and move it on.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're skipping number four and number five for the moment, putting them off to the end. So the two public meetings are moving down, which means that Lola Clyde Park Design Adoption Request starring Dwight Curtis is up. Dwight? Lola just tripped the security alert.
Okay. For those that were part of this last year, we have been going through a park design process for our undeveloped park properties. And that's in compliance with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And, excuse me, we've had four, four properties that were in a position where we could actually do that, and it would make sense. And last year, we did Indian Hills and, excuse me, Atani Parks. And this year, we are doing Lola Clyde Park, and also Milton Arthur Park. And so the next, the next park, or the next session would be Milton Arthur. Now, these are kind of long, but the primary thing is to show you the process that these went through. It was a public process. We started out with three public workshops, where we invited the public in. We, those that, with addresses within the general area of those parks, we actually sent letters to, or postcards notifying them of these workshops. And then, of course, then we used the regular media outlets that we have to notify the rest of the community. So it really was for everybody, but we really wanted those that lived in the general neighborhoods to, to really know to be there, if possible. Lola Clyde Park has been around quite a while, at least the property has been. It's already evolved quite a bit over the years. This was a purchase by the city, not a parkland dedication. Hog Creek, which is the blue line there, that used to just be basically a ditch right along the North Polk Extension. PCEI rerouted this. If you go by there, you can see all the plantings, they're actually looking pretty good. We had a design-build class, engineering class, I think it was Wazoo, that some years back needed a project, and they designed a bridge, and they built it. And so for a long time, this was the bridge to nowhere. But, but knowing, and you know, someday it would actually have a purpose, and it is, it's as solid as the day they built it. In this area, of course, you have PCEI over here, this is their main campus, I think that they've purchased this. And of course, North Polk Extension, Rodeo Drive, and, going to this, of course, you can see where we had the workshops. The very first workshops, we split them, two different nights, one for each of the different parks. Typically, we had them both on the same nights. And then on through, from January all the way through today, April 11th, having your review and recommendation to the full council. Back on March 24th, the architects gave a presentation to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and they recommended adoption of this, of this park concept. So initially, these always start out with lots of nifties. So you can see where the sun, you know, the typical sunshine is, where the winds blow, the topography, and just generally the lay of the land. And some of these, I mean, the landscape architects had to go with what they actually had, but, so some things don't make a lot of sense. This ponding water, it is a little low spot, but it's, it's not because it's natural, it was just because of the way that, just the way that they, they plowed that area. So it's not really a wetland or anything like that. So you see where the prevailing winds go. And they, at these workshops, they broke everybody down into different groups, and then everybody got to basically design the parks how they wanted. You can see off to the left, these were, they're, they're small, but those were designed by different groups, and then the architects consolidated that and put it onto this Concept A. Same thing with Concept B, that's two other groups. And then Concept Three. And as you might expect, we did have a lot of people at this particular workshop. And I won't go through every one of these, but they take all the notes and things like that that came from that workshop, and, and he's, they have a discussion here of the, the concerns or things that people want to change or added, deleted. And then you came up with this. And this was the initial preference by everybody. And of course, now you have something to kind of work with, with the group. And so you have another workshop, and they go through the same thing, and they say, you know, "What do you, what do you like? What do you not like? What do we want to change?" And a lot changed with this one. These were the comments that came out of that one. And then we ended up with this. This is the preferred concept that's before you to approve tonight. And so there's a lot in this park. And one of the things that I really, I'll get to the slide on costs here in a second, I'm sure you saw that's in your packet, you know, a lot of money. That 2.2 million, that's, that's actually in pesos, so, no, I'm kidding. But we understand completely that the, you know, the, a lot of the amenities that they have in these concepts are coming out of these meetings with people that just want neat things, and they're not really talking the costs and things like that at that time. As we would go in the future to the point where we're actually going to put the actual construction designs together and things like that, we would certainly look at all of those amenities, and look for the things that, that made sense cost-wise, and go with alternatives that, that's something we could afford. Maybe, I mean, restrooms are particularly a wonderful subject these days. Instead of having a four-holer in a park like this, maybe you're only going to have a one, a single, you know, restroom. Just things like that, that you can look at, and save a lot of money, and still do the job. So anyway, today's request isn't, isn't necess, it's not to approve the cost, it's to approve the concept. A playground, for example, in this, in this project, I mean, they just, there's a wild playground there, and that's not a bad thing, it's just an expensive thing. You can dictate the price of a playground, and they will design a playground to fit your budget. I mean, that's just how it works. If you want a $500,000 playground, they'll make it for you. If you want a $100,000 one, they'll make it for you. So, I mean, it's just whatever we can afford, and what makes sense, and still fits the spirit of the concept. And so that's, that's what we have. Some of the amenities that you don't typically see in our Moscow parks is a splash pad. And if you don't know what that is, you know, they come in all kinds of sizes and shapes and things. But it was just unanimous, everybody wanted a splash pad, and so it's a little place to go and get, get wet. And it's not a full-blown pool, but it does, it does cost a little money, and it also takes maintenance. Playgrounds, a lot of, both this and the, the next park, the theme of agriculture seemed to come up a lot. And so they threw together some things that, for example, you can see some of the playground equipment that would, would show some kind of agricultural theme. When we get to the Milton Arthur Park, they've actually got a kind of a really cool-looking one, it sort of looks like a barn. So anyway, that's, that's what we have today for you. And you can see through, I mean, a lot of amenities to this, taking advantage of the slopes, lots of pathways. So a person wouldn't get bored here, that's for sure. And so one of the things that I wanted to, if I could, I'm not trying to veer from the topic, but just to show you how, or what we're thinking as far as how we would ever possibly get this done. And let's just pretend for a second that that 2.2 million is, is the price tag. You could go out for a bond. If it passed, you've got the money, build it. What we're thinking is likely, anyway, phasing this. And so in my view, that the way to phase this, and this would be all, all of these new parks, is that we, we have them seeded, so, and irrigated, so now you've got open play space. So you already have a park now. Possibly put in the playground and a pathway to the playground. Now you've, you basically have a very functioning park. You could use porta-potties until the time that you could afford a restroom. You just use open space until you have the money that you would put in the pathway. Maybe you would put sections of pathway till you could afford it.
I'll wait till you're ready.
Benches, trees, things like that. People donate those to us all the time, so a lot of those amenities wouldn't cost us anything at all. And grants for trails are a lot easier to get than most of the other grants when it comes to outdoor things. The sports courts and things like that, I mean, they are expensive. So there's a pavilion, a little bandshell type of a thing, amphitheater, and, you know, something that the city actually needs. And, but those are higher-cost-in things, and those are the deals where you wait until you can afford them, and keep looking for ways to afford them that doesn't bankrupt us. And so that's, that's what I'm looking at for all the parks, as an alternative to getting them done sooner than later, and especially if a bond, for example, I mean, a lot of competition for those monies, I mean, we, you know, police station, roads, a lot of things like that. So we're not thinking this is the overall number-one priority of everybody in this city, so we're looking at those alternatives to, to get them developed faster by phasing. And with that, that's all I have for this particular one.
I just was curious, did you have people prioritize if you had, when you talk to them about phases?
We, we did not. We didn't talk about it, but, I mean, it's just going to depend. I mean, you have those things that you need to do upfront if you're going to have a park.
Right.
And then the rest, we'll just have to deal with as, as far as, you know, as the time comes and the, and the funding comes up. The primary things are to get the kids out there and be able to play, and to be able to walk somewhere, you need accessibility. There are going to be some spendy items, oops, this, the parking lots are going to be expensive. And, you know, we, we did apply for a grant for this. This is part of a design that you've seen before, where Elisa tried for a grant for that, we were unsuccessful, but it's a really good plan, and it worked well with that particular part of the park, and, and so we saw no reason to change that. And so we just included it. And the majority thought we probably needed more parking than that, and so that's where the Parking on Rodeo Drive came. And initially, I kind of went through the other slides fast, but the initial concept had two restroom facilities. I mean, I wasn't going to approach you with that.
So let's say it's a full day. Potentially, how many families, people are in that park?
I don't know that I could answer that. I mean, it's, it's only five acres, and, but it's a, it's a fully, it'll be a fully functional park. I would guess you could count on this being fairly close to what you would see at East City Park. It's smaller, but it has a lot more amenities to it.
So you've got 300 people, maybe.
Could, could be, if you had a big event.
Just depends on how many buses roll up. John?
No comment.
Are you contemplating a more formalized phasing list, list Phase One? This is what we'd like to see Phase Two.
Oh, yeah, sure, absolutely.
And formalize it a little bit more?
Yep.
And as an extension, have you received any input from the PCEI people?
Well, I mean, they were there in force through the workshops, so yeah, I think we've got their input on here very well.
Yeah, so anyway, as part of the phasing, and as you point out, having open space equals essentially a park, so relative to this and Milton Arthur both, can we say that Phase One might be hangout, a sign that announces this land as a city park? Maybe with a little dangly sign below that says, "Full development awaiting funding and/or donations/grants," something like that? Just to let people know that this is their land, this is their park, it's open for use, it's not going to be as nice as the full build-out, but still available for casual recreation?
I would say that could be part of, of a first phase. I mean, I do, I mean, we haven't finished up the budget process for fiscal year '17, but I have signage already built into that budget. But that was also with the hopes that we would at least have the open space, the green planted and irrigated.
Because that's kind of where.
One thing I don't want to do is advertise a park that's not there yet, because it gives an assumption that it's about to happen.
And that's why the little dangly bit is there.
Yeah. I don't think that that helps any. I think it just, it's a detriment.
Yeah, I respectfully disagree.
I'm the one that answers those questions all the time, and, and we take the full force of the anger that comes with that.
Is this it?
So I'm talking from experience of how that works. But Phase One, with what we're talking about, is very simple and inexpensive, so it includes what you're talking about.
Because I think it's good to let people know that park space does exist, and belongs to them, the citizens, and that, yes, you can come in and use it, because this is your park. And now, all the amenities aren't there, and it's not a full build-out, and it's not as nice as it will be, but, you know, this is what we're aiming for, and you too can be a part of the process if you want to get involved.
Sure.
This kind of a thing.
So I think what you're trying to say is, can you put a timeline on the phases that you would like?
I would say the timeline would, I mean, I can propose one, but you would have to approve the money for that.
Well, I mean, in, in terms of like what you were saying, like, Phase One looks like this with these things, we'd like to get to Phase Two, we need this amount of money for Phase Two. If you all agree, sort of thing, we can go forward. But like what Art was saying, I think that having that out there helps educate people that it's, that it's coming to be, you know? It's dedicated space, but it hasn't been fulfilled yet.
I understand that completely. I just don't want to say it's coming unless it's coming. And so that, that would just be my prerequisite.
Certainly, we could talk about, signage can be that this is public property, it's public park property, but without making promises that you can't necessarily keep. I've talked to Dwight a little bit about this, we talked about phasing, and perhaps some resources that could be brought to bear, maybe as an informal policy, if you will, so that these properties can get up and try to be used, at least in some minimalistic fashion. And then you can start biting off pieces of these as you move along. I think Dwight's got a solid plan. We've had people who've wanted to donate to playgrounds, for instance, but you can't put a playground in the middle of a bunch of dirt. You have to have access to it, there are things that you need in order to make it safe, so on and so forth. So if he and his staff can start working toward, how can we start approaching these things on a general policy, and then looking at them individually, we might be able to get some up and going, at least from a minimalistic standpoint, as you're wrestling with, how do you fund the larger amenities that these neighborhoods want? So I think it's a solid plan.
So just to fill it in, if you could have this done your wish, how would, when would you like to see it completed? I mean, you can put that out there, I think that's helpful, yeah.
This summer.
Exactly.
Yay.
If I could.
Hey, that's okay.
If I could throw this out there, just as an example, Milton Arthur Park was seeded and is irrigated, we're mowing, and it's already, I mean, you know, if we had the sign, we would put the sign in now for that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's, that's, you're at least there, and, you know, this, we could have all kinds of ways to do signage as far as what's coming, but until, until we're, at least at that point, but I think we can get there quickly, at least that point.
Well, I think it's beautiful what everybody came up with, I love seeing an amphitheater space.
So, so I figure we can probably recommend the adoption of the conceptual design to the larger council in this case. So on to consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Before we move on to Milton Arthur, for those who are coming in looking for the public meeting on the lot divisions, we moved those a little further down in the agenda, because that was originally posted for 4:30, so we want to make sure that everybody gets here who wants to be here for those. So in the meantime, we're talking about the other items first. And next up is, once again, Dwight, talking about the Milton Arthur Park Design Adoption Request.
Process-wise, this all took place the same way. If you recall where the old slurp and burp was, just to the, kind of the north, the east there, Sutton and Granville Streets have not been developed yet, but it's just off of Robinson Park Road, just to the east of where the Roundabout is. Roundabout would be to your left here. And on Granville that you see there, there is a gravel, I mean, you can get a maintenance vehicle down it, especially when it's dry. But anyway, this has been planted and, and is irrigated, and it, it is really looking nice. This is the same timeline that we used last, that I showed you in the last presentation. As far as how the site analysis went, you can see where the prevailing winds come from, it's almost identical to what Lola Clyde Park was.
It's almost, uh, identical to what, uh, Lola Clyde Park was. You do have a general slope that, uh, goes from the east to the west. And, um, this was, uh, after doing the, uh, the breakdown in the workshops, this is what the concept looked like. Pretty busy. The second group or the second, uh, two groups, uh, this is what it looked like, fairly similar. And, um, of course it had, um, all the different, uh, concerns and things that people wanted to add and, and take out. And, um, in the end, um, well, not the end, but the, uh, conclusion of those first workshops, this was the design that, that they came up with. And, uh, you see where we had parking. Initially, uh, we'd discussed, uh, on one side of this Granville, there will be parking, but since there will likely be houses there, um, it didn't make a lot of sense to take up their parking for this park. So, um, they looked for an, an option to put in a parking, uh, lot. And, uh, of course, same thing, talked about different, uh, issues with it, came back for the final, and this was, uh, what the final concept became. It's a busy little park. Um, one of the interesting things of this particular park was we had, uh, a whole lineage of the, uh, Salisbury family there. And Milton Arthur is the first and middle name of Milton Arthur Salisbury. So we had his kids and their kids and grandkids there. And, uh, and they were very happy with this as well. And they were also part of the workshops. So, um, so you can see, um, a lot of the playground area all through the center, play area up toward the top. Did have a kind of a solitude area. This was one area that I, I had the most concern with. I do not like hidden areas. I don't like them at all. So, but, uh, one of the changes is the, uh, the actual planting that they put there would be low shrubs, so they wouldn't be hidden. They're also right across the fence from people's yards, so I'm not exactly sure how private that is anyway. But, um, but anyway, um, everybody seemed to like that. Of course, has the pathways, has a lot more of the activities, smaller or lower activities, uh, to include bocce and horseshoes and things like that. Also has a shelter and a restroom facility. This also has the splash pad. Interestingly, when we were doing Indian Hills in Atani, that, uh, nobody wanted the splash pads. So, um, interesting how, how that works. But, uh, this is the concept, um, that they came up with, um, like we were talking about with possible phasing. This would be ready for a sign now. We would be ready to put in a pathway to a playground now and get a playground and you would have a fully functioning park at that point. And, uh, minus at least up front, uh, the parking lot. But right now, the typical person in a car, you wouldn't drive there anyway. So that is, uh, that is the concept. The probable costs, and these came from Bernardo Wills, um, was 1.6 million. Um, and the same thing applies here as it would any of the other three parks, any of our parks for that matter, is that we would look for amenities that we can actually afford. And, uh, there are, there are a lot of options. And, uh, you can see here, um, one of the playgrounds that they cited is a possibility, um, they really wanted the, uh, since Milton, uh, Salisbury was a farmer, um, they thought that the agricultural theme was pretty neat. So, um, anyway, um, that's, uh, that's the concept that we're asking you to adopt and, uh, open for any questions?
Well, I've got many questions, but most of them there are gonna probably go unanswered. So essentially what you're presenting to us at this point is kinda like a letter to Santa Claus.
Is that a question?
Well, I'm, yeah.
I'd say no.
No, it's not.
Nope.
2.2 million, 1.6 million on this city budget is not a le-
Well, I explained that. So this is what we would try for and trying to get, um, amenities that we could afford. And of course, adopting this concept doesn't mean you're adopting those funds. Everything that we would do in here, fund-wise, would come through the council just like anything else. And, uh, and I mean, we understand dollars as well as anybody. It's, we need to be fiscally responsible and try to get stuff we can afford.
Yeah, I think it's the same concept we have in all of our comprehensive plans and in fact, the strategic plan. Once you line up all the comprehensive plans, you're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars. So we'll have to look at each of the proposals for streets, water, sewer, sanitation, parks and rec, all of those things and lay them out and prioritize. So I th- I don't think in any of our plans, we've told staff, okay, or the public that, okay, this is the ceiling amount we've got that we can possibly spend on this. We've asked them to let their, their creative juices flow, if you will, to look at those and then with the underpinning that, okay, we only have X amount of dollars and we will prioritize as best we can. But I, I, I know that staff is well aware, John, that these are, if we had an unlimited checkbook and we could give the public exactly what they want, which is how these things began, this is the public asking for these amenities, that we would want to do that. But we don't have that kind of money. So I think the proposal to approach it in a systematic phasing fashion and then see what we can knock off as it comes along is, is the best way to do it.
So it's mostly just an aspirational plan. This is what we would like to see. Clearly, it's not gonna happen in one fell swoop. And so it's something that, uh, we can aim for and strive for because we don't know where to go unless we have some kind of a, a plan put down to aim at. And so that's where I see these plans. And so similarly with Milton Arthur, all of the previous discussion, I think, comes into play again with exactly the same comments, but, um, I think it's a, both of them are neat concepts and I think we should move ahead with them.
And I think Dwight, you're doing a new thing too, that people usually expect a park to be in, but I know that's one of the reasons why you don't wanna have a sign, cause then people are like, that's it? And what you're trying to help, uh, people realize is that it evolves and that there's a plan and we pay for it and do it as we can, but this is what you all wanted. So I appreciate that you're helping people understand that it's a process.
So shall we move this on to the consent agenda as well? Yes.
You're going to. Not asking for budgetary authority, John.
Just approval of the concept.
Thank you.
So thanks Dwight.
Catherine, can I get the book and the pen back, please? Thanks Dwight.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is the annual outdoor irrigation season amendments from Nicole Baker.
Thanks.
And for anybody new who came in that I didn't see, we're getting to the public meetings last because they were posted at 4:30 and so we didn't wanna start early on those until people got here.
Hi.
Nicole.
Well, I'm here because I'm asking for some amendments to the irrigation season ordinance. The first one being that we would like to change the deadline date for the Public Works Director to declare the season. That being because of currently, oh, sorry Les, I started with that. Okay, I'll let Les, uh, fill this one in. I didn't see what came in.
He's not even listed on this, so.
He's not, but he's, he's listed as an additional presenter, but that didn't come through. Uh, well, Nicole started off well with, you know, the, the revisions, uh, two, really two areas that we wanna talk about. And Nicole will talk about the second one, but let me jump into the first one, which has to do with, um, what is currently in, uh, the regulations. We, we adopted, the city council and the city adopted the irrigation ordinance back in about 2007. Uh, so it's been around for quite a while. It has worked well, but there are a few little things that have come up in the process over the years that people ask us for certain things, uh, which Nicole will talk about on her part. And then a logistical, um, administrative issue, which is the one I'm gonna address, which has to do with the start date process. The way the code is written right now, it specifies that the Public Works Director designated will, uh, indicate when the season will be opened by the first of May of each year. As you can imagine, we have a lot of variation in the seasons as they occur. And so here, I just jotted down quickly for you, the opening dates that were declared since 2009. So you can see, we started out, uh, really the first three years in June, uh, early to mid-June. And then we shifted into the May timeframe, late May, mid-May, uh, up until 2015, which was our earliest as May 1st. The reason I wanted to show you these dates is because it points out how much time there is between May 1st and when a season actually opens in some of these years, as much as six weeks after May 1st. The reason that these dates are that late is that it is based upon the temperature that we see, the amount of precipitation, what the moisture content is in the ground, what the vegetation is experiencing in the, in the field. So every spring, when we go through this process, I work with the Parks and Rec folks to assess the conditions that they're seeing on the playfields that they have, uh, what the plant uptake is, what kind of moisture content, how far down into the soil you find moisture, those types of things. Some years, it's great until June, June 15th. Other years, such as last year, which is somewhat extreme, is early as May 1st. And so it's, it varies quite a bit, but typically by May 1st, we're not in a position to be able to say, yes, in June, it's gonna be time to open the season. So what we're asking for, um, in this revision, this part of the, uh, the code revision would be to remove that specific date of May 1st and set it up such that 72 hours after I declare the season open, then it becomes open. And we would advertise it over that 72-hour period, get the press release out, get it off to the paper, that type of thing. So it gives the flexibility to address and deal with the different seasons, uh, that we see each year related to, um, the environment, uh, you know, precipitation and temperature. So any questions on that part?
I think that even though you're crystal ball for the weather, it's probably better than the average weatherman, I think this actually makes a lot more sense to actually deal with the variation in the climate and make a more informed call for the irrigation season.
Very good. The, the second portion of this has to do with variances. And the, the way the structure's set up right now, we do have a variance process, but it is written such that it just deals with variances within the season. And we've had people make requests outside of the season and there are some reasons that that is a beneficial approach. So Nicole's gonna talk about that as well.
Thanks Les. So with that being said, um, essentially if people are planting in the fall and, or at least spring, they are going to take advantage of the natural precipitation. However, um, if you planted just a couple, three weeks ago, we did have a few days where it's been a little bit drier. So they did get the advantages of the natural precipitation. Um, however, if you do have a new planting, you do need to do some supplemental watering. For instance, this last week has been pretty hot. Um, not much, but you do need to do that until the next rains come. So the idea of that is with new plantings, to get it established, you're, you're using less water in the long run because by the time you get to the hot summer, those plants aren't brand new. They've already been somewhat established in the ground. And that's why I'm asking for, uh, you know, and the staff is asking for a change to that in, um, particular part of the ordinance. Um, it would be, um, a case by ba- case by base, um, scenario. Les would give the approval for those particular variances for the outside. It, it wouldn't be, um, the go- the goal of this is to essentially use less water.
Well, yeah, from my point of view, all you need to do is put in a new planting, have it die because you couldn't water it, and then you gotta go back and do all the watering and planting all over again. You even waste more water as a result.
Well, and currently, we do allow people to water by hand, um, with an automatic shut-off nozzle on the end of their hose that the city does give away for free to our residents, um, as well as if you did, you know, a bucket, used a bucket or something. However, if you have a pretty new landscape and elaborate system, you did pay for a drip irrigation, something like that, this is still, uh, you know, it's a good time to plant. I prefer to plant in the fall because even now, I don't have to water those plants. So, um, the fall, you rarely need to see any kind of supplemental because a lot of those plants are already dormant and ready, um, to be transplanted. So, um, with any questions, I can answer those.
No, I really appreciate it.
I think it's great, yeah.
No, I planted, so I was thinking about, you know, I was in the watering place. I wanted one of the hose things. Yeah. I know, maybe come get one.
Part of the intent of the way this is written is we do wanna make variances outside of the season, you know, an uncommon thing. Okay? So it's written such that it is for, variances for new plantings of lawn and landscaping. So it's specific to that area. We have had requests in the past that, hey, you know, I'm gonna be out of town for a while. I wanna start my irrigation system before I leave because it's gonna dry. No, that's not the idea because we're still trying to make sure that we're using as little water, water as possible, you know, for outdoor irrigation. So it would be specific to those areas, new plantings, which is typically where we see variance requests anyway, even within the season, uh, just because of the time of day issue. But that's, that would be the intent.
These, these variances would be just come to you, talk to you, and you would say?
There's a form available, um, online at the Water Department, at the, um, man building. Um, so the process is, is an individual comes in, fills out the form, they, um, specify the amount of when they would like to water and when they'd like to start and stop. And at that point, we evaluate what is appropriate for that site and make adjustments to that or approve it as listed, um, and with a specific date and time on there as well.
Okay, so being a change to an ordinance, this goes to the whole council, right?
Regular agenda.
So shall we move it forward with a nod of approval?
Yeah, definitely.
Yes. Thank you guys. Okay, for, once again, for people who are new in, we're getting to the public meetings last, just to be sure that everybody could get here for those. So we have one other item before then, which is the sanitary trunk line Phase Four bid results and contract awards starring Kevin Lilly.
We had, uh, last Thursday, we had yet another bid opening. Uh, this was for our sanitary trunk line Phase Four, and it will construct or replace an existing line from the southeast corner of Gormley Park to the intersection of Line Street and Third Street. We had four bidders. The low bid was from Titan Technologies of Boise for $694,903. We also received bids from SNL Underground, ML Albright, and Western Construction. Our engineer's estimate with the contingency removed was right on the button for this, uh, at $694,000. So what we are asking today is that you, uh, we'd like you to recommend that we accept the bid from Titan Technologies and award the contract in the amount of $694,903 and authorize us 10% for change orders.
John?
Well, since, uh, we got in a bid that is within the parameters that we set, work needs to be done. I say we accept it.
Me too. So consent, please.
Thank you.
Thank you Kevin, well presented. I like it when bids come in where they're supposed to. It's such a relief.
It's a crapshoot every time.
Oh, and there it is on the record, yes. Okay, now we move backwards to item four, which is a public meeting for a lot division proposal at 902 South Harrison Street. Rebecca Couch.
Good afternoon. Okay, so as you said, we have a, a lot division proposal for a parcel that's currently addressed as 902 South Harrison Street. The subject property is located on the corner of South Harrison and Lewis Street on the south side of Lewis, as shown here in red. We have South Logan Street to the east and further to the west, South Adams Street. The subject property is located within the multiple-family residential R4 zoning district as well as all surrounding and adjacent properties. We have the medium-density, um, residential zone R3 just to the east. Taking a closer look at the subject property, you can see there's an existing structure in the northwest corner. That's the principal structure and then a existing accessory structure in the northeast corner adjacent to the alley. So there's an alley currently in the rear of the, of the parcel. As I said, the property is within the R4 zone. The minimum lot width in R4 zone is 50 feet and the minimum lot area is 5,000 square feet or 800 square feet per dwelling unit. Setbacks in the R4 zone are as follows. The front setback is 15 feet or 20 feet for a garage that's facing that street. The rear setback is 20 feet. The street side setback is 13 feet or again, 20 for a garage that's facing the street. And the side yard setback is five feet. The sum of the two shall- The sum of the two shall not be less than 15 feet. Here's the site plan that was submitted by the applicant for the proposed division. This is the property, existing property line today here, and this is showing the Lewis Street right-of-way and the Harrison Street public right-of-way. So, the proposed new lot line is here and the proposal is to divide the existing parcel into two lots. The existing parcel is 11,250 square feet and with the division, we would create a lot of 6,030 square feet that would have a lot width of 90 feet on Harrison Street. And the second parcel would be 5,220 square feet, the east parcel, with a lot width of 58 feet on Lewis Street. The existing principal structure, the house, would meet all minimum required setbacks with the new lot line applied. And the applicant is showing some parking that could be created over here, a new curb cut since there is none existing on this side of the parcel and enough room for two parking spaces for that use since there is none existing on that side of the parcel currently. On the new east lot, the existing 400-square-foot garage is currently a non-conforming structure. It does not meet the minimum five-yard setback from the alley lot line. So, it would continue to be a non-conforming structure with the lot division approved, three feet, only being setback three feet from the alley and in this case, becoming a side yard setback. And in addition, it is not meeting the, what will be a front yard setback for that existing garage, which would be 20 feet would be the requirement and it's currently setback three feet, six inches. So, with that, per City of Moscow requirements for lot division, the property owners within 600 feet have been notified and the site has been posted seven days prior to today's meeting. Staff's recommendation is to take public comment if applicable and recommend approval of the lot division request with one condition, that the existing accessory structure be removed or relocated in order to satisfy the minimum front and side yard setback for the newly-created eastern parcel.
Any questions for Rebecca before we get to public comment? I've got a couple.
Okay.
With the development of the new parcel, will there be any improvements to sidewalks and such required?
Yes, that would, if they are to construct a new principal structure on this lot, there would be the typical requirements from Public Works for street frontage improvements.
And will any of this affect that sewer line? Is that a private sewer line or is that part of the public?
That's a private line.
Okay.
Since he brought that up, are there sidewalks on the rest of the block or would this end up just being 60 feet of sidewalk out in the middle of nowhere?
Well, there is no existing sidewalk on this section of Lewis Street currently.
Is there one slightly down?
There is one here, yes. So, if this is split here and they construct on the east lot, only the frontage improvements would be required for that, in front of that parcel.
Okay, anybody want to comment on this one? Yay, nay, general? Give us the benefit of your knowledge. Come on up to the microphone and you get to state your name and address and then tell us what's on your mind. Nope, this one right here. You get to sit at the table.
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Wolfhorst. I live at 803 Logan Street, which is a property within the affected area. I forget exactly what you said about?
600 feet.
600 feet. So, I'm just interested to inquire what the proposed timeframe for the project is so that I'd be able to understand as a neighbor to this, what the impact to that alley and the congestion that I see, which is already not a problem, but I guess I'm just understanding with the alley and all the things I can anticipate that would be happening there from a safety and timeframe standpoint if there's a timeframe proposed.
The applicant didn't indicate that they were in any hurry or that they had any specific timeframe. I think that they were just looking at getting the approval for the division and then sometime in the near future anticipate them developing a new structure on that lot. So, I don't know their exact timeframe.
And it's not required under our code that they do state a timeframe in order to get a lot division?
Actually, I can see with the stipulation that the garage be moved to comply with setback requirements, safety might actually improve around that alley and corner intersection for seeing what's coming, what's going, things like that. So, it's hard to say right now, but seeing as it's just a lot division under consideration, it's kind of hard to say what would happen, but it would all have to conform with existing regulation, building requirements, city codes.
Sure, okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. John?
Oh, I'm, I'm fine with the recommendation.
Yeah, I think it complies with the, all the requirements for an R4, the lot sufficiently large to accommodate the street frontage, the access, everything else, so I think we should move this forward.
Tell us a consent agenda.
Yes, please. Okay. Page back to the agenda. Yes, now we're on to number five, which is a public meeting for the lot division proposal at 1820 East F Street. Becky, it's you again.
All right, thank you. So, as you said, the proposed lot division for parcel currently addressed is 1820 F Street. The subject property is shown here, outlined in red, south of East F Street, which runs right here, and to the east of North Mountain View Road. The property is accessed by F Street and also via Lund Lane and Eileen Drive. There's two property frontages. The subject property is located within the R3 residential zone as well as all adjacent properties to the east and the west. Directly to the south, we have the R2 single-family residential zone and also to the northeast. And then directly to the north in the green is Farm Ranch and that's the City Hamilton Aquatic Center. Taking a closer look at the parcel, you can see it's currently undeveloped and then, as I said, here's that access from Eileen Drive. It has 60 feet of frontage there. Being in the R3 zone, the minimum lot width is 60 feet. Minimum lot area is 6,000 square feet for a single-family dwelling or 7,000 square feet for two-family dwellings. Setbacks are going to be the same as the R4 zone, 15 feet in the front or 20 for a garage, 20 feet in the rear, 13 on the street side or 20 for a garage, and then five feet minimum for the sides and the sum not less than 15. Here's the site plan that was submitted for the proposed division and it has been surveyed. The proposal is to divide the existing 80,405-square-foot parcel into three new lots, two of which would have equal square footage of 13,210 square feet and 82.56 feet of lot width on F Street. And then the remaining parcel would be 53,985 square feet in size with 60 feet of frontage on Eileen Drive. So, the proposed parcels would meet all minimum lot area and lot width requirements for the R3 zone. And again, the parcel was notified for a public meeting to property owners within 600 feet and staff's recommendation is to approve the lot division request with no conditions.
I just need to go on the record saying that I teach in the school that's next to this lot.
And you have no financial interest in the school?
I have no financial interest in this.
Or the lot itself?
No. Just wanted to let you know.
I have sort of a technical question. Given the configuration of the existing lot and the geometry of the lot division, is there a time limit applied to further division of the remaining Lot 15 up there because it looks like it's prime for division into further lots later on? And are we looking at the potential for dividing this into three and avoiding public hearings now at the expense of having further lot division later on? Is there a stopwatch that goes on? You can't subdivide further after, until two years go by or something?
I'm not aware of any time.
Me neither.
So, in other words, if this is approved, they could come back and do another three-way split or two-way split on Lot 15 and essentially have five lots divided as opposed to three, which gets away from the subdivision requirements?
It's an interesting.
That's what he was asking, the same thing I'm thinking.
Whether, you're asking whether, taking this in separate, separate actions would allow one to sidestep the requirement that five divisions of a piece of property require the filing of a plan?
Well, the, something to keep in mind is the, I was going to say the minimum lot width in R3 is 60 feet, so any new parcels on that would have to have 60 feet in public frontage.
Shove the 60 feet on through to the far side.
Currently under city code, any single lot division action that creates fewer than four lots is just viewed as a lot division. So, there is no, if somebody divides a parcel, I mean, I'm sure this parcel was part of a larger parcel at some prior point in time, but under our current requirements, no. It's, lot divisions are any action that creates four or fewer lots. Anything more than that would be a subdivision per state code definition and would go through the subdivision process. Now, outside of the process, all of the development requirements and standards would all be the same between the two, but lot divisions are an abbreviated process for smaller-scale applications.
So, in other words, we can't gaze into our crystal ball with any legal foundation?
Correct. I think we can only evaluate the application as it's, as it exists and as it is presented to the council.
Okay, thanks.
Bill, just looking at the lots in the Lund subdivision, and if you push Eileen Drive straight through, you could still come up with?
Four more lots, is that correct?
Maybe four. The difficulty you run into is our current cul-de-sac standard is a 96-foot diameter cul-de-sac, so they're very large. So, by the time you, I mean, that's a 60-foot right-of-way in width and that cul-de-sac is going to need to be another third larger, over another third larger in diameter. So, the new cul-de-sacs are fairly large. If you have 53,000 square feet and you don't extend the parcel, the, extend Eileen Drive too far before you begin the cul-de-sac, you could probably get four lots, but that would probably be the maximum.
So, you'd go between two and four, essentially?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, anybody from the public have anything on this one? Same procedure as last time, roll on up with name and address and tell us which on your mind. Ask any questions. Any takers?
Got one.
Oh, good. Please.
Thank you. I'm Leslie Baker. I live at 1212 East D Street in Moscow, but for purposes of this, I'm the Chair of the Board of Directors at Moscow Charter School, which is there in Lot 14 adjacent to this. And really, all I'm seeking is information, kind of as a follow-on to the discussion you just had, what would be the potential for extending Eileen Drive and putting some sort of large development right next to my school? I don't know if this is something you can answer or not.
Yeah, it's, whatever the current zoning, it's an R3 lot now, anything that would be allowed in R3 can be built there. Any development that want, if someone wanted to develop, but they'd have to come forward and it would have to be reviewed by our planning folks, our Public Works folks, they determine whether or not it was appropriate, that it be, the development is appropriate and then the Public Works infrastructure that would have to be brought to the lot. So, it would be done pursuant to our current processes. But if you look at our zoning code and look at the R3 designation, you can see what can be built on that piece of property.
R3, you're not going to get a big development.
Okay, so, I think what I hear you saying is that really this particular division doesn't change much the potential for what might happen in that lot, is that correct?
I would say that's correct. It's still the same zone.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, hearing on, what should we do with it? I think consent agenda meets all of the requirements for a lot division for this particular zone and has all the setbacks, lot widths and everything else is required. So, I'd say move it on to consent agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. This is the only drawback to doing everything.
I believe you hit everything.
I think you did too.
So, okay. Nobody else has anything? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.